Email mbackler@swanseaNH.gov. More information on public access to the meeting is available on the town's website at www.SwanseaNH.gov. The first item of business is a call to order. The second item, minutes for April 13th, 2020, and the minutes for May 4th, 2020. The third item of business, public hearings. The first is special exception application. Apex Racing LLC requests to grant a special exception for a repair garage use on use on property located at 972 West Swansea Road pursuant to section five out of the B2A of the zoning ordinance. The subject property is shown at tax map 70 lot 33 and is located in the business district. The second public hearing scheduled for today's agenda is a special exception application. Asher Properties LLC requests to grant a special exception for a multifamily dwelling development on property located at 173-175 the Naddock Highway pursuant to section five, Article B 2B of the zoning ordinance. The subject property is shown at tax map 19 lot 67 and is located in the business district. Discussion, the fourth item is discussion and other business. The first item under that category is motion for rehearing. Avenrude Development Group LTD requests that the board grant a rehearing regarding the board's decision rendered May 4th, 2020 on the special exception application submitted by Avenrude Development Group LTD and other business as may be required. Allow call the roll. Keith Tebow?
Here.
Please identify if you are where you are in your home and whether is anyone is with you.
Yes, I'm in a room in my home and I'm alone.
Adam Mulhern?
I am here and I'm in a room in my home and I'm also alone.
Ann Karazinski?
I'm here of Ann Karazinski and I'm alone in a room in my home.
Bill Hutwalker?
Hi Beverly, I'm in a room alone in my home.
Brian Rutgers?
Hi Beverly, I'm in my office alone.
Eric Calio?
I am here and I am home alone in the room.
Bob Mitchell?
Present and I'm alone in my office at my home.
Ruth Snyder? Ruth is not present. At the, everyone is here by roll call.
Thank you Beverly. I believe we have first item on our agenda is the minutes from the previous meeting. Oh, it's minutes from two previous meetings, is that correct?
Keith, that's, that is correct. So it's your minutes from the meeting on April 13th and which we, we forgot to approve on May 4th and then also the meeting minutes from, from May 4th as well.
All right. Point of order, I, I will be abstaining on these minutes, but I, because I wasn't at the meeting, but I will entertain a motion on the meeting minutes from April 13th, 2020.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as so presented. Adam Mulhern here.
Thank you, Adam. Do we have a second?
Second. Is that Eric Calio here?
Thank you, Eric. So it's been moved in second to accept the minutes as presented. Any discussion on the minutes or the motion? Hearing none?
I'll do the roll call.
Yes, thank you.
So accept the minutes for April 13th. Keith Tebow?
Stane.
Alma Hearn?
Yes.
Ann Karazinski?
Yes.
Bill Hutwalker?
Abstain.
Brian Rutgers?
Yes.
Eric Calio?
Yes.
Bob Mitchell?
Abstain, I don't believe I was at that meeting.
Okay. Ruth Snyder is not present.
Okay. Appears as though the motion carries to accept the minutes of the April 13th, 2020 meeting.
Carried by roll call, yes.
Thank you. Minutes of May 4th, 2020. Entertain a motion on those minutes.
So move, this is Bob Mitchell. Move to accept.
Motion to accept the minutes as presented by Bob, do we have a second?
Second, Brian Rogers.
Thank you, Brian. It's been moved in second to accept the minutes as presented from the May 4th, 2020 up, meeting of the Swansea zoning board. Any question on the minutes or the motion? Hearing and seeing none. I'll ask Beverly to call the roll.
Keith Tebow?
Abstain.
Anna Mulhern?
Yes.
Ann Karazinski?
Yes.
Bill Hutwalker?
Abstain.
Brian Rutgers?
Yes.
Eric Calio?
Yes.
Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
And Ruth Snyder is not present. The motion carries by roll call.
Thank you, Beverly.
Keith, sorry to jump in if it's all right with you. I have a few introductory slides just to introduce the Zoom meeting format for those participating this evening.
Okay, that'll look great, thank you.
I'm gonna just go through those quickly. So I wanted to thank everyone for joining us this evening. I know some of you have participated in other Zoom meetings with the zoning board over the past month. So some of you are familiar with this new online meeting format, but for some of you, this is your first meeting that you're attending. So my name is Matthew Backler, I'm the Director of Planning and Economic Development for the town and I'm going to be serving as the host for the meeting tonight. So we're using a webinar version of Zoom, which may be different from other types of Zoom meetings people have done. You can see there's a list of panelists that are participating. So this evening, panelists are, are zoning board members, our recording secretary and myself. At the time when applicants are presenting to the board, they will be designated as panelists. And everyone else who is participating is listed as an attendee. So attendees can, can see everything and hear everything that's going on, but they're muted for the duration of the meeting, except during the public hearing portion of the meeting. So I just wanted to go over the public participation guidelines so people understand how to participate during the public hearing. So the board chair will notify you when the public hearing is open. If you're participating online this evening, you would click on the blue hand icon that's at the bottom of your screen and that will raise your hand. And I, as the moderator, can then see that you, you wish to speak during the public hearing and we'll call on people in the order that they have raised their hands. If you're calling in by phone, you would need to press star nine on your keypad and that will also indicate that you want to speak during the public hearing. When it's your turn to speak, I will unmute you and let you know that you can address the board. When providing comments, please provide your name and your address for the reporting secretary. You can also, you'll see there's a question and answer feature. You can also type in questions there for the public hearing and we'll respond to those. We'll answer those live so everyone can hear both the question and the answer. So for example, we have a question that we got just asking the number of attendees that we have. So just responding to that quickly here, currently we have 32 attendees this evening in addition to our nine panelists. And public comments will only be accepted for a specific period of time and the, the chair will let those participating know when that public hearing is coming to a close. So everyone has a last chance to speak during that public hearing. If you have any problems over the course of the meeting, any technical issues, feel free to call me. My number is listed on the screen here. This is my office number, but it is getting forwarded to my cell phone and also my email address is listed there as well. So that's just some, some background information for those who are kind of more new to the Zoom meeting format. So with that, I'll turn it back to the chair. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you, Matthew. Our first order of business tonight is a special exception application. Apex Racing LLC requests to grant a special exception for a repair garage. Yes.
Hey Keith, this is Brian, just point of order before we get started, I just wanted to make sure that I did a call out to you and to the rest of the zoning board to let everybody know, I thought Adam did a really good job last week filling in and so that's it.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate that. I, in reading of the minutes, I, I think you're spot on. Thank you, Adam, for filling in at the, sort of almost at a last minute situation. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Do, what was there a notice given that item number two has been continued to the next, next meeting or do you need a motion for that?
Probably a motion would, would be helpful.
All right, then I'll, I'll make a motion that the second item on the agenda, which is the Asher project, has requested an extension to the June 15th meeting. So the motion is to continue the public notice of the public hearing to June 15th.
There's a motion. Do we have a second to that motion?
I will second that.
Thank you, Adam. So we have a motion to continue the Asher application to our next regularly scheduled meeting and it's moved in second and any discussion on the motion? My only, I'd like to just make sure that everyone, folks know that although I'm, I'm part of this motion and so forth, I will abstain because I will be for, for reason, personal reasons, I'll be recusing myself from the Asher application. But I just want to let folks know upfront. Adam will aptly step in again and handle the reins of that, of that, of that, of that case. So it's been moved in second and any other questions or concerns about the motion? Beverly?
Keith Tebow?
Stane.
Alma Hearn?
Yes.
Ann Karazinski?
Yes.
Bill Hutwalker?
Hi.
I'm sorry, say again?
Hi.
Thank you?
Yes.
Yes. Brian Rutgers?
Yes.
Eric Calio?
Yes.
Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
And Ruth Snyder, he's not present. Motion passes unanimously by roll call with one abstention.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Bill. I think that was an appropriate thing to do, there may be people on the call that were, would have, would have been waiting for that to cap.
Excuse me, Keith, this is Bob Mitchell.
Yes.
I've been struggling with my cable router all day. I think it's overheating, but it's been kicking in and out.
Okay.
And, and so if I get ejected from the meeting, I will try to get back on, but there may be a discontinuity there, so I.
Yep, there's your discontinuity.
Say no more.
All right. I'm thinking Matthew, if we should probably seat an alternate for Bob?
Well, Bob is actually now an, an alternate, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's right.
We have all our listed members.
We still have, all right.
Yeah. Oh, and Bob's back, hi Bob.
I think I'm back.
Okay, Bob, thank you. You did freeze up there for a moment, so we'll, we'll take that as an insult if you do that again. It's, it's, it happens on Zoom, so, all right. Where were we? All right. Our first order of business tonight is Apex Racing LLC requesting a special exception for a repair garage use on property located at 972 West Swansea Road pursuant to Article five, out of section five, Article B 2A of the zoning ordinance. The subject's property is shown at tax map 70 lot 33 located in the business district. I think would just like to note that this public hearing had been originally scheduled for April 20th, but the ZBA voted to continue this application to this meeting tonight. The proposed project will require a site plan review and a public hearing with the planning board. So it's at this point that we normally give the applicant the ability to explain their project is. Head Matthew?
Sorry, if I could just jump in. So just on the advice of town council, going forward, we are going to be asking the board to take a vote of development of regional impact. I know this is something I have corresponded with the board about just via email. So I think, I think going forward, the board, the board can decide if that's a regional impact vote, if that's something you want to do kind of at the beginning of your agenda before you, before you take up the minutes and the other items on your agenda, or if you want to do that ahead of each application, I think that's up to the board to decide that. But just to, as a reminder, I know I've sent some information by email, but the regional impact vote is, you take that if it could be reasonably expected if a development could impact neighboring municipalities. And state law lists six factors that, and this is a vote that planning boards take too, so it's applicable to land use boards. So there are six factors listed in, in state law and I'll just run through those quickly. The relative size or number of dwelling units compared to existing housing stock, proximity to a municipal border, impact on transportation networks, anticipated emissions, noise, light, et cetera, proximity to aquifers or surface waters that span municipal lines, and then shared facilities, so this would be schools, waste disposal facilities, those types of shared facilities. The board can consider other factors as well in determining whether or not a development is one that could potentially have regional impact, but those are the six factors listed in statute.
Or, what are the questions on, on this process?
Eric Calio here, I have a question. Does this development regional impact, is this voted on separately or is this part of our criteria? And I guess my other part is depending on how we vote on that, does that influence the application in any way? Like, I guess what I mean is like if we didn't feel it influenced, then I, I just wanted to understand how that might.
Sure. So it's, it has no, no bearing on special exception or variance criteria. If, if a project is deemed to have the potential for regional impact, it just, it means we're required to notify adjacent municipalities and also notify the Southwest Region Planning Commission and they're afforded the status of in a butter for the purpose of the public hearing to provide comment. But it doesn't, yeah, no bearing on, on the special exception or variance criteria.
Adam? Yeah, I have a question as well. If it is going to have involved another municipality, how do we determine time wise to give them notifications? So for instance, an application is deemed to have regional impact, is it something that we vote on the following meeting to give the, the appropriate time or do? I'm just understanding the timeline of that decision making.
So if, so if the board, if the board voted this evening, if there was a development on your agenda and you voted that it, it had the potential for regional impact, then I, I can't recall exactly the, 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 the time that needs to be provided to adjacent municipalities and Southwest Region Planning Commission, but we would have sufficient time to send out that notice prior to your next meeting on June 15th. I believe it's a 14 day time period that we're required to give them, but I just, I can't recall off the top of my head. Yeah, does that answer?
So just to clarify, specifically tonight, if there was an application that was deemed to have regional impact, would that application then be pushed to the following meeting? I just want to get the clarity on that, I'm just curious.
Yeah, we would, so yeah, we would need to push that to the next meeting just to, to provide sufficient time to, to send out, send out the notices. Thank you.
Really good question, this is Brian Rogers. So then if we continue a case hypothetically, that may or may not fall within that criterion of those six, should we make a vote on the DRI impact beforehand so that the potential out of town of butters, if you will, would be then notified over? Can you read into my abstract question?
Yes.
Because I would hate to kick something and then have to go through this and then kick it again.
Yeah. I, I don't see why you couldn't take a vote on regional impact for the, the second item on the agenda that was just continued to June 15th. You're not, you're not opening the public hearing or you're, you're just taking a vote on the, on the regional impact question.
I could envision a situation where you may not realize it has regional impact until you hear the case. I, I know I've seen the planning board vote on these routinely at the beginning of their meetings. And I often thought this, that what if, what if something comes up in the course of deliberation or presentation that would cause you to change your mind one way or the other? And then a sort of a corollary that, I know the, we've been doing this for many years, but how often does this actually happen at the planning board level that actually they do find something that has, or they determine that something has a regional impact?
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, since I've been working for the town a little more than a year and a half, they've, they have not found any applications to have the potential for a regional impact. I, I mean, I know, I, I'm pretty sure the market basket development on Route 10 was a development of regional impact.
I can also say I've been, I've been taking the minutes for the planning board for eight years and it perhaps once or twice in that eight years have they felt there was a regional impact.
Okay. Now, the first question as to whether the timing of this vote, does it matter when, when, when we would make that, this determination one way or the other, Matthew?
The way I've seen it is, is done kind of, I mean, I understand wanting to kind of hear the app, hear the presentation to get a full understanding of what's being proposed. I've always seen it done at the beginning. And so, let's see, I'm just pulling up the requirements here. So if the board found a development had a potential for regional impact within, within five days of the meeting, so within five days of, of this evening, I would need to notify Regional Planning Commission and affected neighboring municipalities of that decision. And then we're also required to provide 14 days' notice before the public hearing to the Regional Planning Commission and the affected municipalities with the, the time and date of that hearing. So what we would do is if the board determined a development had regional impact, we would send out that notice right away with the public hearing date and time. But it's a 14 day requirement.
So this is Brian again then, so since this is a closed hearing and we're not open at this point, I guess I can ask really more directly. Obviously, we have to do one of two things for the case we just kicked to June. We either have to wait till June to start to hear it and then vote on DRI and then say, yeah, we believe there's an impact and then kick it to July, or take a vote on the DRI that we presume will be there based on the size and location, et cetera. Am I to assume that correctly? Over. In other words, cautiously, should we bring up that case as a DRI impact vote right now and then we can get you inside the wire of the 14 day posting?
I mean, I think that would be, if the board wants to take that up, I think that would be, all right, I'm just trying to, trying to get Bob back in here. That would be, that would be helpful. Just then, yeah, if the board determines it is regional impact, then we can, we have plenty of time to send those notices out before your meeting on June 15th.
Because if I understand you correctly, the only, let's say we do that and we come up with the yes vote or an affirmative, the only impact has nothing to do with our abilities to approve or not approve a plan. It only allows additional municipalities et al. to be interested parties.
That's correct.
Okay, then I, I think at this point that I'm going to make the motion that I believe that the second case, the Ash, Asher case.
Brian, could, could I interject for, it's Bill Hutwalker?
All right.
There, there is potential impact of a, of a different nature. If you go back to Market Basket, I'm not sure what the sequence, sequence of events was, but according to Matthew, we, we determined at the planning board level that there was a regional impact. That, that resulted in fees to Market Basket that might not otherwise have occurred, had been incurred. So there, there is the potential for, for impact on a development if we determine that it has regional impact.
Potentially. It's not automatic.
Not automatic, I'm just saying there's the potential for it.
So is that, you know, is that something that the applicants need to be aware of in our process going forward?
So just the, the additional fee that the applicant would occur, incur is, we have to send that notice by certified mail.
No, excuse me, Matthew, that's, that's not what I meant. The, in the Market Basket case, I, I think that they were awarded, the city of Keene was awarded, it was either 150,000 or 250,000. The town of Swansea was either 15,000 or 18,000 for tree cutting. So I'm, I'm just making the comment that there, there is the potential for additional fallout for an applicant. I just want people to know that. I'm not saying it should influence the vote one way or the other, it's just we need to understand that there is the potential for additional impact.
Yeah, thank you, Bill. In that case, I'm going to withdraw everything I just said because the fact of matter is we already make it difficult enough for people to build and I think this adds another potential layer and an extra cost and I'm, I'm withdrawing my motion, I think that's, that's ridiculous.
Actually, I never got a motion from you, you started to say and then you were interrupted, so I don't know that there was a motion on the table.
You're, even better, thank you.
Matthew, if, if, giving back to the question that I had on the table relative to timing, I guess it would seem to me that it, that this is, this is maybe because it's ZBA related as opposed to planning board related, that there's a, I think there's a possibility that during a course of a hearing, we might, we might find that there is now regional impact. As such, I think if it would be, I, I might propose we, we, we take that vote before we vote on the projects, before we go down through the list, but after we get to hear from the applicant what it is that they're planning to do, is that, is some reason why anybody have a, other concerns about that? Is that fair to the applicant? Is that fair to the other towns?
I would just say, Adam Mulhern here, that we're only got half the story, so to speak, available to us now for information. We have what the applicant has.
We have what the applicant has submitted, you know, in the application. But a good portion of what we learn about the project is done via testimony. And I think to vote on something. That could potentially have impact on the cost of the application, the cost of the project without knowing the full story is premature. So I would agree with you, Keith, in terms of timing. That's just my two cents. And Matthew, to that end, because I'm just thinking this through for the first time, indulge me. If we if we took testimony, opened a public hearing, took testimony, closed a public hearing. And then decided that this had regional impact. I think you would, I think you answered this question, but I'm asking, and would that impede our ability to make a decision? Would we need, would, because potentially if we think it has regional impact, means we think that, you know, that the next town over may have something to say about this. Does would would that necessitate us holding off on a decision? Potentially, maybe not in all cases.
Yeah, I mean, I think. So I think. I think if you decide that. You know, an application has the potential for for regional impact. Because because it affords those adjacent municipalities the status of a butter and they have the right to participate in that public hearing process, you should. Keep the public hearing open and kind of continue the public hearing. It's. It's. It's hard to know because it's really, you know, case by case basis, what's the development, what's the potential impact on the neighbor? How would you address that impact or mitigate it?
Well, if it gives them the status of a butter, you gives them a fair amount of. A power is not the right word, but but opportunity, if you will, to weigh in on the development. So it would seem to me that it is a sort of as a as a. Way to move forward is that if indeed we. We land on a case where we keep the public hearing open, we vote before the public hearings closed. And no, knowing that that vote. Should it be in the affirmative that it does have regional impact would mean we would. Keep the public hearing open. Continue the case until the next regularly scheduled meeting in most cases or plan a special meeting, but. I think if we take that action, we've said that there's a potential, but another a butter that we don't, isn't at the table and that we would. And should. Give that a butter. The ability to weigh in on the on the potential project. It just seems that way to me. I don't know. I don't know. We again, we're in sort of an uncharted territory here. Eric had his hand up. Eric?
Yeah, I have a question. I mean, you know, it seems like it. I mean, the way we're thinking about this could potentially muddy the waters and I don't know if this process is supposed to be over complicated. I'm just wondering, I had one experience, you know, sitting at the other side of the table where as part of my zoning application, as part of the butters, I had to send a copy. Of the application or or actually not even so much that, but a notice of the hearing to adjoining towns. So I'm wondering, Matthew, if that's something that should be done on all applications going forward. So if anyone's got interest from those towns or if those department heads from those towns have interests, that they can get the word out just. I just foresee like a scenario where we have to continue and then we'd have to come back the next month just to vote on things which. I mean, we we do it if we have to do it, but just to do that seems not like a good use of our time when we're trying to get everything done in the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I. I think it's something for us to discuss more. I mean, the way that the statute is written, it's it's a decision that needs to be made by the board. And I do think it. I I would caution the board, I guess, against just. Call calling every application or or. Creating every application as a development of regional impact. I I do think these are these, it's really meant to apply to to larger, more significant projects in a community. Again, it's it's kind of at the decision of the board when something rises to a development of regional impact, but. But I think sending out a notice for for a small variance application. It's an additional fee to just, I mean, it's it's a nominal fee, but sending out the certified mail gets charged back to the applicant. So it's an additional fee for them.
So this is Brian, so. I think I'm torn. Frankly, because part of me as a Swansea taxpayer and Swansea resident really couldn't give a crap what Keene or Marlborough or any other surrounding town thinks about what we do in our town. It's our town and if affects them, so be it.
She was on the other foot of me.
But the other part of me is like, I certainly understand that this is a regional area. This is not city glued to city glued to city. We're a bedroom community, whether we like it or not, Swansea is a bedroom community of a city. And it's the only city in in the county that has full time public services. So we have to be cognizant of it. So there's there's the dichotomy, right? I mean, we have to, we have to be careful. And and the only part that's really throwing me is is really twofold. I don't want to get to the point where somebody wants to do something and the zoning board. You know, here's the case and then kicks it to determine DRI and then it's another month and then we have to hear it. And then, you know, it's next thing you know, our building season here is so short. That if we start burning 60 or 90 days out of it because of this extra layer of bureaucracy, I just I'm concerned about that. But if it need be, that's fine. The more serious case for me would be added costs if we're if if doing this is adding cost to somebody. I'm not sure how I'd feel about that, to be honest. Notifying Keene and then paying Keener are way two different things.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Bill.
Matthew, in in your time, how how many notices have you received from a budding towns?
So I I have not ever received a notice from an abutting town.
So my point there was that Keene in the last three years has has approved almost 400 housing units between Colony Mills, the middle school and Hillside Village. We've not been notified of any of those. I I think the the approach to take is to make make a motion like the planning board does at the beginning of the meeting. And then, as Keith said, if we get into a point during the course of the. Of the public hearing that we realize this is much greater than what we thought, we we could always change the vote. If the initial vote was no, we we could always change it to yes, but I agree with Brian. I think if we wait. We we first of all, we run the risk that we miss it. Or secondly, we run the risk that an applicant's been delayed an extra month unnecessarily. And I I think it's important for board to know that we we should have been doing this for years. This isn't something brand new. And I think we're, we we deserve to give ourselves a time with Matthew at another time where we just discuss it more fully. So we we all have a firm understanding of it, but but for now, I I think we we'd need to make that decision at the beginning of the public hearing.
I concur. Plus, I want to know if that special wallpaper, Bill, did you order that in special for your house?
He's had a movie.
How to turn it off.
He's he's had a movie premiere.
I just learned today how to do it. I can't figure out how to get back in to get rid of it, but no, it's not, it isn't. Next time I'll I'll figure out how to remove it. Only you, Brian.
I was thinking. Okay, so I guess. Anyone else have weigh in on what they what they believe this? I mean, I I I do believe I concur with Matthew that this is going to be rare. We're going to know it when we see it, I think. And I think it's all, it'll be even more rare that if in the course of deliberations, we decide it has regional impact. But so I'm thinking that taking a vote at the beginning of the meeting on the entire agenda, whether any of the, any of the cases might have regional impact. And then allowing ourselves the luxury of changing our minds before the end of the public hearing is is fair. Anyone else have any thoughts? That covers all bases from my point of view.
Okay.
I think that's a good approach.
Thank you, Anne. Well, do we take a vote on this one tonight, Matthew? Is that would that be in order?
Just give it a shot. Come on.
I think so.
All right. Entertain a motion on the issue of regional impact of the tonight's, we only have one application in front of us at the moment. So I would make a motion that the application for Apex Racing does not have a regional impact. Second.
I'll second that, but I would just add that it appears to not have regional impact prior to us hearing the case.
Thank you, Brian.
Based on that, I can, I second.
Adam? Change my verbiage to include Brian's commentary as well. Very astute. Brian, thank you. So it's been moved and seconded that the Apex Racing application does not have regional impact. Beverly?
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, point of order?
Yes, Bill.
Quick question. Would we also be taking a vote on the item that's been continued to next month since we've we've already got the application?
I think if, I don't know, does board members have any? Any ideas about that, about whether we should be doing that or not?
Yeah, so I was all for it, thinking that it would save, you know, if people are budgeted to spend money and during a building season and and you start. You know, burning 60 days a clock at the zoning board, that's they still have to go planning board and. I mean, they still got a lot of a lot of daylight to burn there and we're chewing up a piece of it. But I'm really concerned frankly about the economic piece. I I don't know what the financial burden is and Bill brought up a good point. I don't know if that's a set hard fast rule. It's 1%, 10%, 0%. It's project by project. But I think before we start throwing financial burdens at somebody, we need to at least understand it so that they can understand it.
Matthew, do you have any any thoughts on on whether or not we should include the Asher? Case in this in this potentially in this motion?
I I think it's fine for the board to to include it in the motion. Yeah, typically, I mean, the planning board typically takes this vote before opening public hearings. So I don't think there's any issue with with voting on that as well.
Matthew, Matthew, do you want me to read to them just so that they can hear the way the planning board words it? Not that they have to word it the same way, but it might be helpful. The planning board motion reads like this. Board members considered whether any items on the agenda could be construed as having potential for regional impact. Motion was made, et cetera. There was no item or there was an item on the agenda which we could construe to have potential for regional impact. That's how they phrase it.
About 12 layers of ambiguity there.
Yeah.
No wonder we never got notices.
I also think that. Potentially, they they wouldn't, it wouldn't be, it would be a separate motion if we were to do it on each case. I I guess they the planning board doesn't do that though, do they? They?
No, they don't.
No. But you can do it separately too.
Yep.
Wait, favor of the board?
Probably save time if we did it like the planning board. That, you know, lump it in. I mean, because we're all getting copies of the application prior to coming to the hearing. So I mean, I think we would know coming into it based on that information.
And yeah, and and knowing that we can change our minds, if you will.
Right.
During the.
Efficiency.
Yes.
Yeah.
I agree with Eric. And Keith.
But we do have a motion on the table. I think what I'd like to do is to take a, unless there's any more questions, take a vote on that motion to on relative to Apex Racing. And then. Entertain a motion on the second one. Is that, are people comfortable with that?
You're the chair, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yes. What you say, Bob? Bill?
I said, you are the chair.
All right, Adam, are you? Would you like to keep your motion as is and and move forward? It's your motion. Or do you want to amend it to include Asher? Why don't we amend just the purpose of time and then we can discuss it if anyone says no. With respect to, let's add both applications that are under, that are being presented to the board here. I would, I would say that. To the best of our knowledge now, none of the. Of the. The. Applications. I'm just thinking in terms of, none of the requirements seem to be construed to have regional impact on the community at large. To the best of our knowledge. You see, does that, Brian, does your second still stand?
Yeah, I'll keep the second, but aside from that, going forward, I wish that Matthew would find out that the true financial impact for potential. I mean, if there is something in the regulation, we'd we'd like to have it reported back to us so that we have any idea. But I I would agree at this point, second is moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the Apex Racing application and the Asher application do not have regional impact. Any questions on the motion? Beverly?
Keith Tebow?
No.
Anna Mulhern?
No.
Ann Karazinski?
No.
Bill Hotwolker?
No.
Brian Rutgers?
No.
Eric Calio?
No.
Bob Mitchell?
No.
Hey, the motion passes unanimously by roll call.
All right, thank you. All right, we, I think we're back on track here. At this point, we will ask, I see Jonah is here on the on the screen and in all his glory. If you could explain to us, Adam, Jonah, a little bit what you're what you're looking to do out there.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody for showing up. My name is Jonah Gosnell. I am a resident in Keene, New Hampshire, 24 Aldrich Road.
Could you speak up? I'll get closer to your microphone, please.
I can, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I am representing myself. As owner of Apex Racing LLC. And applying for a special exception for as a repair facility. Some of what we do in there as a basically performance or race shop will include repairs. So I understand that I need to go through this application. This will be primarily a business related to race cars. Probably primarily oval track cars like you would see per se at Mananox Speedway. But there will be other things going on in there. It will not be your average repair facility like we're not going to take a car in off the street and do brakes and an oil change. Will be definitely more specific. And I've gone through and taken a good look at the surroundings and I don't believe that there will be anything but any pluses to. This company being in place there in Swansea as well as any of the property development. We are. Actually making it probably better for the roads around us. We've gotten rid of the burn that sits. Off of on the town road and you will have no more water running back onto your own road during snow and rain. It's all going to run down into our property and the wetland area as it has been. Please excuse me, I'm new to this, so.
Okay.
If anyone has any questions, please feel free to ask away.
Tell us, if you could. What make, what what is, why is it different from a normal repair shop? What what are you doing? I know you won't be doing brakes on a, you know, on a 68 Cadillac, maybe you will, but. But then what what will you be doing in that shop that is different from a typical repair shop in your opinion?
Primarily, we'll be dealing with, like I said, race cars, so a non-street vehicle. Will be some now and then, like I said, someone who wants a performance update to that vehicle. But in general, we will be taking a car that someone is just making looks to be better. We'll put it on, you know, basically a surface plate or a pull down. We'll put it on, you know, basically a surface plate or a pull-down rig and do a full, complete setup for a car dependent on the track that they race at. It's not something you would normally do to a street car at all. And like I said, yes, we will do things like possibly change the oil in a race car. And so we will have things that are similar in that aspect, but we won't normally be doing a, you know, transmission service or things like that. So it will definitely be more performance oriented.
So suspension, I'm thinking?
Yeah, suspension, the, we'll be doing quite a bit with suspension, actually. That's one of the biggest aspects to racing. Make the car turn, make the car handle, you get to go faster. So as an example, our own race car is in what's called a crate, crate motor division. We all have the same motor. So it's all the little things about your car that make you win. So when you improve on all the other things around it, hopefully you're better than the guy next to you. There isn't really anyone that offers anything like this until you get into northern Vermont or basically into southern Connecticut. Actually, there is one in, one in Massachusetts as well. But they're few and far between and we're very fortunate enough to be in an area where we have several race, racetracks. Eight oval tracks, asphalt oval tracks in New Hampshire alone, so. Plus you get outside and get into Massachusetts and southern Vermont, so we're, we're in a good area for it.
Other questions, board members? Will you, will you be building them ground up?
Not, wait.
Yep, not initially, but yes, we're, that is our goal to form a full chassis builder. So we're, we're hoping to, that's a, that's someone I'm gonna have to probably bring in. You know, I'm fifty now. I don't have a lot of experience as far as that type of engineering goes, so to bring someone in on that one to help with that process. But I've been involved in racing for quite some time and we have cut both front ends off the cars and rebuilt that part of it. But as far as doing a complete chassis build out of tubing, yes, we were planning to, but that'll be a little ways down the road.
Okay. Rebuilding engines, is that a, is that a common thing you may be doing or?
For the most part, honestly, no. The majority of the very possibly, but very few and far between. Most, like I said, like our division, we race modifies, it's crate motors. The, the divisions below us, late models, street stocks, they all raise crate motors now as well. So this is a sealed engine you purchased from a GM dealer or someone who sells them. You're not allowed to open them up, so you do not get to rebuild them. If it blows up, you have to go buy a new one, unfortunately.
Really?
It, it's made actually to make this sport a little more cost effective, to be honest, because in our eyes, I think it's a great thing. It also keeps it more competitive. You'll have one race team that can afford that crate motor, but can't afford to have an open motor built. And you'll have, you know, say half a dozen teams that can do that, and those will be your top, top six cars every week. But this makes the playing field a little more even.
Gotcha.
One of the other things we're doing will be also selling parts just over the counter, so you know, race parts, performance parts for street cars as well.
Yes.
Just Adam Mulhern had a question. A- as it pertains to customer traffic and so forth, I mean, what do you, what do you anticipate? The type of number and number of customers you'd have on a daily, weekly basis?
Well, you know, I, I'd like to tell you I'm gonna have a hundred people a day, but I, I don't have an exact answer to that. I don't expect I would see probably more than, say, ten to twenty people in a day. A lot of what we're gonna do will be involving someone bringing me a race car, dropping it off. And we will, we'll take it, work on it for a few days, you'll come back, pick it up. So we're not in the building very long, other than to discuss exactly what they'd like done to their car and then they're leaving. I will have parts available online as well. We'll, we'll have a regular storefront online. So we will be shipping out of there. But I honestly wouldn't see probably more than ten to twenty people through the door in a day. I wouldn't foresee that anyway. Believe me, I'd love to think it's gonna be people lined up outside waiting to get in, however. I'm just being realistic.
Thank you.
That may be a planning board issue relative to enough, you know, parking and things of that sort too, so. Just, that's a good question, Adam. I'm gonna ask this question on a, I live about a half a mile from Town Hall on Route Two. On a clear Saturday night, I can hear Mananox Speedway clearly. Is there going to be a noise factor? Are you going to be firing up engines in the back, back outside your facility to see how they perform? Will we be doing any of that so that there would be a noise element to what it is that you're looking to do?
That would be done inside only. So this is a block building. Keep the doors closed when we fire cars up, so there shouldn't be any noise at all.
Okay. Because you, you are relatively close to some neighborhood, some single family homes and out in all directions around where you are and.
Yes, yes, sir.
We wanna, we wanna, we wanna be comfortable with, at least personally, I do wanna be comfortable with.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not in interest.
Not sure if he can hear us, Jonah, but you've, you're sort of.
Way you should perform, and if I'd like it quiet, I'd like.
You see him back right now.
Okay, so.
May I have to ask him to repeat that, Keith?
Yes.
Internet, I was just saying that, yeah.
Yeah, we, we're having problems. Action, Jonah.
Okay, sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can right now, sounds good.
Yeah, you're doing great.
Great, thank you. No, the, the, the question was in regards to noise and I was just saying that things would be done in, inside with the door shut in regards to firing up a race car.
I know, you might. I know, you may want to try turning off.
Doing anything, I believe whatsoever, considering it's a block building.
Matthew?
Oh, Jonah, I was just gonna, you're, you're cutting in and out again. I would recommend trying to turn off your video to see if that helps.
I'm not. You, you all.
I know. Not sure if you can hear us, Jonah.
Does anyone hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Yep, we can hear you.
I don't know about now.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's much better.
Okay.
Good.
All right. I don't know where I was when I cut out. I apologize. No, just saying that, yeah, a- any cars being started would not be done outside, be indoors in a closed building. To make sure that, no, we're not disturbing anyone outside. I know there are a couple houses directly across, out the back of the building, across the street, and also we have the trailer park across Route Ten, so.
Yeah. Okay. Questions, Adam?
This kind of segues another question. As it relates to the facility itself that you're going to, you said it was gonna be a block building. Do you want to talk maybe a little bit about the facility itself and, and, you know, what it would entail, just from a high level point of view?
Sure, it, it's actually an existing building. It's, it's been in Swansea for years. It's, it's, the, the front of it is brick on the outside. But the entire building itself is just steel beam and block and it's got cement floors. The section in the front of the building that will be used as storefront will actually be carpet tiled. Just to cut down on noise a little bit. And that's probably about fifteen hundred square feet approximately, and then the rest of it will basically be shop, it's all cement floor. And that'll be inventory and then space for working on the vehicles. There's two bathrooms, one out back, one in the front for customers. There'll be a handicap parking spot in front of the building. Tried to think of everything along the way, but anticipating four or five parking spots on the Route Ten side and on the back, probably another four spots on the back of the building. Those will be primarily for employees. I don't expect a lot of traffic coming in from the backside of the building, other than people with their trailers, but that's what you know, the rest of the parking lot will be for, so they can just kind of drive in and turn around and drop a trailer off.
Excellent, thank you.
Sure.
Other questions?
Eric Calio here.
Eric.
Question about, actually two quick questions. So the first, storage of vehicles, will you be planning to keep any vehicles there long-term, or is this just an in-and-out facility where you're gonna handle vehicles and then they leave the same day?
I don't believe, well, actually, that's not true. Some of them will probably leave the same day, but not all. Some of them will be there for a period of time while they're being worked on. We're anticipating having customers basically leave their trailer, so we're not leaving vehicles outside. This is not gonna be like a your normal repair facility where we have cars lined up per se. No, not only that, nobody wants to leave their race car outside. There, they stay undercover, so it'll either be in the building or in a trailer.
And then waste, like the motor oils and fluids and stuff, do you have a plan for that?
Any waste oil, actually, a friend of mine has a machine shop with his brother and they burn waste oil. So he gets all my waste oil and he comes and picks it up with a transfer pump. So waste oil, any that we have will go into fifty-five gallon drum and be sealed and contained until it gets pumped out. And that'll be as needed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is a public hearing. I, I, Matthew, I don't know if this is an appropriate time to open up.
Yes, I think it would be. I just had a few comments for the board. Thank you. So we, we have been working with Mr. Gosnell on a new access off of Westport Village Road to access the backside of the property, so myself and the DPW director have been working with Mr. Gosnell on that. And then a question had come up about, there's an existing septic system on the property. And there is a, a large wetland area on the property. We're not sure of the exact location of the septic system in relation to the wetlands. But the town does have a one hundred and twenty-five foot setback requirement for septic systems from wetlands. It's an existing system that's there today and the applicant would continue to use that. But it could only be replaced if, if it is within that one hundred and twenty-five foot setback, it could only be replaced if it's in failure as verified by the health officer. So I just wanted to make, make the board aware of that. We did have some questions too, just about. As the board may be aware, this property is adjacent to the Route Ten Minimark property. Where there was an underground gas storage spill several years ago that impacted this property, as well as several others in the area. So this property is subject to water testing and analysis by the DES. And we actually just received the most recent testing done on April seventeenth. That found the water on the site meets DES water quality standards, so. I know there have been some questions about that just from members of the public, so I just wanted to share that, share that with the board.
Matthew, may I ask a question just for the minutes? If the septic system to the wetland fails, then it must be replaced, and I didn't hear the rest of the sentence.
Oh, if it's a, the failure has to be verified by the, the health officer, that it is in fact failed?
And then, and then is it have to be replaced or not? I mean, I, I don't.
Yeah, so it can be put back in the same place if there's no, no other practical location for it on the lot.
I see, okay, thank you.
You know, it just, so the applicant is where, I believe where the system is today is an area that is proposed to be paved over, so a new system may need to be located under a proposed parking area.
The, I guess I have a question because I just, given your, your explanation, Matthew, that the, it's a proposal to put a driveway in the backside off of Westport Village Road. Maybe the applicant can tell us what, what's, what's, what's the reasoning behind that? Jonah?
Yes. Reasoning for that would be to have that be decided, we would, you would pull it with a trailer. We, you will be able to drive around the building, but the well is also on the south side of the building, which is the only way to drive around it. We will have a spot, you can drive around that, but some of our customers are gonna have a, you know, forty-foot trailer with a twenty-two-foot truck. So asking them to drive around the building is maybe doable. We'd have to make, you know, we'd have to make it a pretty wide area for sure. However, it would be a lot easier to drive in on the Westport Village roadside and just come into the parking lot that way. We, we did talk with the road agent and he was, kind of let us know that, you know, it had to come in at as close to a ninety-degree angle as we could, which wasn't a problem. We've got it close to the northern end of the property. But also in excess of ten feet from the corner marker within regulations, so it shouldn't be an issue. Like I said, we've tried to make it so the water runoff from that road is actually gonna end up on our property and not on your road, creating more proceeds, so. Hopefully that helps.
Thank you.
Keith, I have a question for Matthew.
Yes.
I, I'm looking at the application, it says attachment B is kind of the plot. And I see the septic and the well highlighted in bright yellow. And I guess my question is, is the current location of the septic less than a hundred and twenty-five feet from the wetland, or have, do we know? Is there a place to put another septic and keep it out of the hundred and twenty-five feet setback?
So I guess the, the short answer is, we, we don't know, because we don't know where the delineated wetland boundary is.
Okay.
Exactly.
That's an estimate then.
Yeah.
Okay. I understand.
Other questions of the board? Okay. Matthew, do we have any members of the public that wish to?
Speak? Let's see, so at this point, I'm looking at our, our list of attendees. Right now I do not see anyone with their hand raised. So just for, for folks participating. If, if you are interested in providing comment to the planning board, or excuse me, to the zoning board, this would be your opportunity. So if you're, if you're participating online, you would need to push that blue raise hand icon. Or if you're on the phone, you would push star nine in order to let us know that you want to provide, provide comments.
Hearing none? Last call for questions from the public? Any further questions from board members?
Just a quick one, Keith.
Sure, Bill.
Bill Hotwolker, Jonah, will there be any storage of waste material outside, or will it be all undercover, or will it be kept inside your building?
No, it would all be kept inside. Actually, we're in the process of moving the outdoor, what was outdoor oil tanks. Those will be gone, we're moving the oil tanks inside, so there'll be no, the only thing that will be outside will be a single propane tank.
And then my other was, why does New Hampshire DOT need to issue a new curb cut? Is the location of the existing one off?
Honestly, I asked the same question. The response I was given was just that, because it has changed ownership and the business changed. That I needed to apply to a new, for a new one, so I did.
Okay, and, and just to be clear, your septic system is operational?
It is operational. It is, right now.
Okay, 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 all right, thank you.
Sure.
And, and just to clarify, Jonah, I don't, I don't think you're making any modifications to the Route 10 curb cut, right?
No.
All right. Still nothing from the public, Matthew?
I'm just looking now. I, I don't have any, anyone with their hands raised at this point.
Okay. Last call, board members? All right, we'll, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you all for participating. Comments, thoughts, questions before we get to the questions from, from board members?
Keith, I'd like to compliment the, the applicant. He's, he's done a phenomenal job with that property in a very short period of time. And he's taken, taken a piece of property that had a beautiful building that was pretty much hidden from view, and. He's revealed that beauty, and it, it really looks great on Route 10. Congratulations, Jonah.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that greatly. I agree with you. I think it's a beautiful building.
Excellent, excellent. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to concur with Bill. I think that Jonah's done a, a really good job since King Cut was down there. The building just seems to have been hidden and. Sitting empty and needing some TLC. I think he's done a great job, Bill. Good comment. That's it, over.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone else? Anyone else had, on the merits of the case, or the questions? Are we, do order the questions then? All right. Is the exception allowed by the ordinance? Bill? I think, did we lose Bill's audio?
Oh, it was by choice, Keith. I was thinking, did you close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, the answer is yes.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Brian?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
I, I agree. Two, are the below listed specified conditions present under which the exception may be granted? Is the proposed use similar to one or more of the uses already authorized in that district? And is it an appropriate location for such use? Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
I'm glad you didn't call me first, Keith. I, I would say that until, until the, until the public hearing I listened to two weeks ago. That the manner in which we had typically answered this question, that the proposed use is similar. There, although they weren't mentioned, there, there are multiple facilities in the business district that this is similar to, and, and it is an appropriate location. In fact, we, we have testimony from one of the. One of the letters that came in that the, the building was originally constructed as a auto paint facility. But where, where I'm a little bit troubled, and I'm hoping we're going to have a meeting on this at some point in the future. Is the, the idea that was, was put forth by the attorney of the applicant two weeks ago, which is that what we should be doing. Is asking the question, is it similar to youth, uses authorized, in other words, permitted in the district? We've not done that before, and I don't find anything in there, in, in our ordinance that any of the permitted uses that are similar, so. I, I just put that in there, because I, I think it's a discussion we need to have at some point.
Okay, does anyone have any comment about that? I think we, we could save that discussion for later. At a later time, not necessarily tonight, but we can certainly do that, but I. I think I'd like to take a chance to, just before we do have a discussion, just to review, actually review the ordinance and the wording and so forth, so. I mean, where were we? So Brian, yes. Bill, yes. Adam?
I would say yes, as well, for the. Above stated reasons that Bill just mentioned.
Okay. Ann?
Yes.
Get everybody, and I concur. I think I got everybody on that.
Yes, you did.
Okay, thank you. Will such approval reduce the value of any property within the district, or otherwise be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood? Adam?
I would say that no, and I would say the reason being is that there's been no testimony given, and. To the, to the contrary, as it relates to reducing any of the property values, so no evidence has been submitted. To, to, to show us that it, it may reduce those values. And I would say it's the same as it being injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood for the same reasons, so I would say no.
Thank you. Ann?
No.
Bill?
Uh, no, actually, there, there was testimony given that there won't be any, you, you brought up the question with regard to noise and.
Right.
Noise and odors are the things that this is asking about with regard to obnoxious, offensive, and injurious, and you, you brought that up, Keith, and. He answered that he's going to contain all of his, or the majority of his noise, obviously, there'll be a little bit that'll get out, but. But inside his building, and there, and he's not going to be painting, so there's no reason to anticipate any odors, so. I would say no, and, and as Adam mentioned, there was no evidence with regard to property values, other than what the applicant provided. And I suspect with what he's already done, he's already improved property values nearby.
Right. Brian? No. Thank you. Will there be a nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't get all the votes. I have, I didn't have yours.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I vote no. I don't, I don't see that. I don't believe there'll be any reduction of values, or device be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Will there be a nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians? Ann?
Uh, I'll say no. Joan is making a, a, a big effort here to accommodate his customers, as well as. Probably get that traffic right off the road, because I would think those big trailers would have to stop and negotiate. Quite a few turns there, if they're going to try to get in from the, from the Route 10 side, so I, I'd say, I'd say no.
Thank you. Bill?
No.
Adam?
I would say no, as the testimony was, was, we asked, or I asked for that matter, how many customers or clients he anticipated to see in there. I think it's a reasonable. Number anticipated. Of course, we, every businessman hopes to have that number double, tripled, or quadrupled. But in terms of, you know, number of traffic, based on that, I don't think there's going to be an additional serious hazard to vehicles, pedestrians, based upon the testimony of. Of the use, so no.
Thank you. Did I get everyone on that?
No, Brian needs to be.
Okay, Brian?
I don't know. You know, I'm on the fence. He says he's expecting a hundred full customers a day in and out of there.
He said he's hoping.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I don't see any impact.
All right. I, I don't believe either, at this point, given the, what testimony we have, that there'd be any nuisance or serious hazard to any vehicles or pedestrians. Finally, will adequate and appropriate facilities be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use? Bill?
Yes, he has a well, septic, and three-phase power.
Okay. Brian?
Yes.
Adam?
Let's say yes as well.
And Ann?
Yes.
Uh, I agree. In that a planned driveway, I think sort of caps everything in terms of facilities and so forth, for the proper use, so I agree. All right, we've gone through the questions, we've had a. Pretty much unanimity on, on the answers, so we can entertain a motion on this case. Anyone feel compelled, motivated? Inspired?
Oh, this is Ann. I'll make a motion that we accept the application and move forward.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that. Adam, all right.
It's been moved by Ann, seconded by Adam to. Approve the special exception for Apex Racing. Any questions, concerns? Issues relative to the motion? Hearing none? Beverly? Would you, would you, I'd like to be last.
Okay, certainly. Adam Monherne?
Yes.
Ann Karazinski?
Yes.
Bill Hotwolker?
Yes.
Brian Rutgers?
I want to be last.
You can be chair then.
Yes, my answer.
Pete Tebow?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously by roll call.
Thank you, Beverly. Thank you, Jonah.
Thank you very much, all of you. I appreciate your time tonight.
And we appreciate yours as well. Best of luck.
Best of luck.
Thank you very much. See you all in a week.
All right. Since what I believe is the next item on the agenda is taking up the motion for rehearing for the Avonru. Case. I am going to ask Adam to take over as chair, as he has been throughout this, in this particular case, and. We'll seat Eric for myself, and I will leave the meeting now. Adam, if you could just take it through to the end, including closing the, the meeting at the, at the end, I'd appreciate it.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you all very much. Good luck.
All right.
Adam?
Yes, Bill.
Bill Hotwolker, I'll be recusing myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And so we will be seating for Bill. Bob Mitchell, and so that would bring the same five individuals that were, or members that had voted. On the previous application, so we are all, I guess, in attendance, and we're all back here and are seated.
Got it.
So the last item on the agenda that we have here is a request for a rehearing of the previous case, the Avonru case. Our application. Matthew, would you like to, for the purpose of the board, has everyone, first of all, has everyone had a chance to review the, what has been submitted to us? With respect to the applicant?
Yes, I have.
I've read it.
Okay. And is there any questions or, or, or concerns that come up immediately, love to discuss? And I think what I would ultimately like to do is have Matthew, who's prepared a, a summary for us, as part of that, that, of what was provided to us in our application here, or a packet. To, to kind of go over some of the overviews of the, of what the applicant is looking for. But is there any concerns or questions that anyone has immediately, like to discuss?
No.
Okay. Bob, Ann?
Not at this.
Not at this point. Eric?
Not at this point.
Okay. Matthew, would you be so kind as to maybe review quickly the, the, the request for rehearing for us?
Sure, thank you, Adam. So as the board knows, on, on May fourth, the board voted to deny the special exception application submitted by. Avonru Development Group. And pursuant to state statute, the applicant has a right to appeal that decision within thirty days of the vote. So on May fourteenth, we did receive a motion for rehearing. From Shehan Finney on behalf of Avonru Development Group. And so now, under state law, the zoning board has thirty days to act on that request, to decide whether or not to grant a rehearing. So while the decision, whether or not to, to grant a rehearing, it's a public meeting, according to your rules and procedures, this is not a public hearing. So the board would not be taking comments from the applicant or members of the public this evening. Just to remind the board of, of your options, if the board grants a rehearing. A new public hearing would be held, and, and new public hearing notices would be sent out to a butters and published in the newspaper and posted in town. And that would most likely occur at your next meeting on June fifteenth. If the board denies the request for a rehearing, that ends your process at that point, and then the applicant does have thirty days to appeal that decision to Superior Court. I provided some background from the New Hampshire Office of Strategic Initiatives, from their zoning board handbook. I know the board is familiar with rehearing requests. But the, that handbook does advise that the reasons for granting a rehearing should be compelling ones. So there should be a persuasive argument on the part of the applicant, that there was a mistake in the decision that was made by the board. Or new evidence is provided that was not available to the applicant at the time of the hearing. I did in my memo to just include a summary of the motion for, for the rehearing. So the, the applicant, in their motion for rehearing, is arguing that a rehearing is necessary. Because the board made an error in its decision regarding criteria A and criteria B in your special exception criteria. So in terms of criteria A, the motion claims that, and. Criteria A is the proposed use is similar to one or more of the uses already authorized in that district, and is an appropriate location for such a use. And the motion claims that the board used a different and new standard in their decision. Quote, whether the proposed project was similar to other projects for which the zoning board of adjustment previously granted special exceptions. And the motion continues that the zoning ordinance requires the board to determine if the proposed project is similar to the list of permitted uses within the ordinance. I would advise the board that. I would advise the board that the special exception criteria are criteria in the town's ordinance adopted by the town. And the board should continue to consider what their interpretation is of these criterion, given your experience serving on the board. And how those criteria or how you evaluate special exception applications based on that interpretation. There are also references to Haley Heights and Colonial Village. Haley Heights is now Princeton Square Apartments on Route 10. And there's also references to the special exception application for a multifamily dwelling that the board approved on February 10th, submitted by 439 FTLLC. And for the board's reference, I did provide tax cards and tax maps for Princeton Square Apartment, formerly Haley Heights and Colonial Village near Packet, and also the site plan from the 439 FTLLC special exception application. In terms of criterion B, which states such approval would not reduce the value of any property within the district nor otherwise be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood. The motion claims that the board failed to articulate the reasons for finding the project would be offensive and states that the main opposition was related to the size of the project and its setback from the road. And that the board erred in finding the project to be offensive based on its size and setback because it met applicable zoning requirements. As the board is aware, two meetings were held on a special exception application on April 20th and May 4th, and the board heard several hours of public testimony over the course of those meetings. In addition, we received numerous correspondences from members of the public that were shared with the board in their meeting packets for those meetings. Public comments were made about the project being injurious, obnoxious, or offensive for other reasons, including increased traffic, vehicular pedestrian safety, neighborhood context, impact on Wilson Pond, among other comments. The minutes from those meetings and the videos from those meetings are posted on the town's website along with the meeting packets. So the board does have those or has had the opportunity to review those as well based on what is included in the motion for rehearing, just for your consideration. So that is what I included in my staff report. I'm happy to to answer any questions based on your rules and procedures. It's at the board's discretion whether or not you want to review the motion for rehearing point by point. You're not required to, but that is an option that you have based on your rules of procedure.
Thank you, Matthew. Thank you. I appreciate that. As the board as well, where we spent two separate meetings. One, a regular scheduled meeting, and a second special meeting that was heard. If I think the count was roughly six hours plus of testimony discussion about this case, both from a butters, from the applicant. I think our own questions, too, are the board's members' questions. So I think there's been quite a bit of discussion on this and all the points thereof. But the applicant, or sorry, the applicant is who's looking for a rehearal is is questioning two of the sections of our of our question and our decision making, both in the A and the B section, both one being proposed use is similar to one or more of the use already authorized in the district. And whether or not it's an appropriate location for that use erring that our decision making was flawed in some fashion. And then, two, the such approval would reduce the value of any properties with the district nor otherwise be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood. Which is also what the applicant is claiming that the board, you know, misjudged on. So I think all of us had made our testimony, both recorded vis a video as well as the discussions that we had amongst each other. But does anyone have any specific information that they'd like to or concerns or anything they'd like to say about either of those two parts of what we're being asked to rehear for? I'll open up to the board on that for discussion.
Adam, I have one quick point. The there's discussion by the attorney that says that I they thought that I set new standards, new adjectival standards. My discussion did not center on injurious or obnoxious. But I did spend some time with the definition of offensive. So any words I used there were between Merriam-Webster and myself, looking at expanding upon what was offensive to the neighborhood. So for the record, I would say I did not establish or attempt to establish new adjectival standards. I was focused in my comments on offensive.
Thank you, Bob.
So Adam, this is Brian. I fully respect the attorney and his clients following the procedural steps that they're allowed to follow and for this to move forward in any direction they have to follow. So I appreciate the fact that they're coming back to us with a request for rehearing. I think that's the right move, and I fully respect it. So now that I've said that a couple of times, it is not lost on me that some of the questions we're asked to submit our retort to is, to some degree, subjective. What I might find offensive, you may not find offensive, et cetera, correct? So with that said, there is some level of subjection to these questions. All of that in a nutshell to say, I thought we heard the case. I thought we rendered a verdict that, at least in my opinion, from my vantage point, I am comfortable with. And I have read the request for rehearing. And I am not about to change my mind. I think I'm comfortable with the decision that I made and the input that I gave, given the testimonies that we heard. Over.
Thank you, Brian. Eric, Anne, do you have anything else you'd like to add to that?
Well, I I respect the applicant as well. If they have more information or have, you know, some change in what they're trying to accomplish, I, you know, perhaps that's something that we would entertain. I'm not uncomfortable with with my decision. Maybe I could have used better words to describe what I was attempting to do. But as Brian points out, it's subjectivity, and and I am not going to change my mind or my opinion about my intent. So I'd say we move on.
Thank you. Eric?
I read the attorney's letter in request for rehearing. Certainly, you know, I could see, you know, both sides. I could see the concerns of the butters. I could see what the applicant's trying to do. And you know, I respect all sides. I mean, being on the other side of the table in the industry I work in, you know, it's a tough situation. I'll say from my end, I stand behind my vote from two weeks ago, and you know, I respect the other board members' positions as well. I guess my only concern is you know, and just looking at what we're reviewing and what we're being asked to do tonight is, you know, I would just ask the board to ensure that, you know, if there were reasons why they didn't support something that, and I think everybody said that, you know, was that articulated properly? And, you know, it sounds like from the board, people feel like they did. You know, someone else could say, well, you could have said more, or maybe there should be more in the record to support that for whatever happens. But you know, that's just my concern there is, I mean, obviously, whatever's been put in the record is going to go where it goes. But you know, I know we had spent a lot of time on this, so I think that, you know, we were all kind of tired towards the end of that last meeting, but we did our best. And I think that's all we can do at this point. But again, I, you know, I stand behind my vote from the last meeting.
All right. Thank you, Eric. I appreciate that. Well, it would sound that, you know, unanimously from members of the board here that we are in agreement, and I would agree with with your all your sentiments that we heard the case, we understood what we were being asked to vote on. We voted based upon our best understanding and the interpretation of the of the special exception rules and regulations here and criteria. We all voted. We understood what we were voting on. And it seems to me that everyone is support of what their vote was during that discussion. So it sounds that that is the unanimous feel amongst all the board members here. And I would I again, I also respect the applicant, the applicant's capability, and what they're part of the process they're going through as this being one further step. But I would I would agree with both everyone's also sentiment that we we did vote based upon the information we had in front of us, and we voted understanding the questions clearly and how they were interpreted. So I would entertain a motion. If there's no further
Chairman? Mr. Chairman, Brian Rutgers, I'll make a motion before I before we interject any more testimony in what is now a closed hearing so that this can proceed through the correct channels and process. I'll make a motion that we deny the applicant's request for a rehearing.
For a second.
I'll second that. Anne?
Motion has been made to deny the applicant's request for a rehearing. It's been seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none. Bev, I would ask you to provide a roll call, please.
We'll do that. Bob Mitchell?
What could you? What are we voting on again is I want to make sure the yes or no is right.
Yes, it's a motion to deny the rehearing.
I will vote yes on the motion to deny.
Eric Calio?
No.
Brian Rutgers?
Yes.
Anne Karazinsky?
Yes.
Adam Monherne?
Yes.
That's four votes to one, four yes and one no. The motion passes.
All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen here. And Bev, for for being spectacular. Is there further business that we have, Matthew, that I'm missing?
We don't have any other items on your agenda.
Okay. Is there any discussion, anything anyone would like to add? Anything at all? And the board members?
No.
All right, that hearing none. Is anyone would entertain a motion to close our meeting?
I make a motion to close this meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's made to close the meeting tonight, and it's been seconded. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Beverly?
The meeting closes at 8:52 PM.
Okay. Thank you very, very much for supporting me as a chairman, and I appreciate the opportunity to to continue to work with you guys on the board going forward here.
Good job, everyone. Thank you. Good job, Eric.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Take care, everybody. Have a great night.